About ready to go here.
It is now four o'clock and we're going to begin the Rialto Unified School District Board Budget Study Session, July 31st, 2013. We're starting right on time. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance and, Joe, if you would do us the honor, Mr. Martinez.
Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that honor, Mr. Martinez.
Absolutely. Before we begin, Dr. Seaman, do we have any comments from the floor, from the public?
I have received none.
Okay. So I understand we have no one speaking away from the agenda or on the agenda, correct?
No.
Okay. Next, we have the budget study session and it's been recommended that we move over to the table so we can see better and maybe we can do that at this time.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Because I put a, instead of holding the microphone. Good afternoon, President Ayala, Vice President Mr. Montez, board members, staff and the cabinet. Welcome to our Board Budget Study Session. As you recall, Board, you expressed your concerns when you adopted the budget at the June 23rd, if I remember the date right, you expressed concern. You say, "We'd like to understand what budget we're adopting at that night because it was a deadline. We have to submit our adopted budget for fiscal year 2013-14. By June 30th, I do appreciate you approved the budget and we move forward and the budget is officially submitted to the county, the deadline." Today, I'm bringing the informations to you, the budget you approved on June 23rd related to the fiscal year 2013-14. Furthermore, I'm bringing you up to date what happened after governors acted on his official budget on late June or early July. So this is the information up to date as of now. With that, I'd like to start with the PowerPoint. The agenda is in your book and all information is in your book. I'll walk through everything in your book. I assume everybody has a copy of the, you have the entire book and I think the public has also the PowerPoint. Okay. The very first slide I'm bringing to you tonight is what happened after governors finally acted on his official budget for fiscal year 2013-14. This is the governor's final budget for fiscal year 2013-14 and this is a budget highlight. Finally, governors and legislators approved the local controlled funding formula. This means LCFF and some of you heard that term and it is official now and this is a change of how school going to be funded from this point forward. This is a first time change. The Prop 98, some of you recall, the Prop 98 is not anymore. There's no minimum guarantee. LCFF has a new funding model. It has no guarantee what will be the next year or following year. So this is clear, everything, you know how school district should be funded prior to this LCFF. So this is a new method of school going to be funded. The funding is, will be fully implemented by 2019-20. It's an eight years plan. You remember Proposition 30. When we acted on Prop 30, this was bridge on the Prop 30, this LCFF. So the full implementation will be eight years and will be based on fiscal year 2013-14. There are three different elements. I'm going to cover those. First element is called base grant, which includes your COLA 1.565%. The method of the base grant, you can see that breakdown of the funding by grade level. K-3, 609, 52 and 46, 7, 8 and 9, 12. You see the numbers are different. Because of the, now the LCFF will be funded by, according to the grade level. The old rules, it used to be based on ADA. We used to get a flat amount per ADA. That's not the method of funding any longer. This is the method of funding. Continue the next slide. It's a lot of information. I know it's probably hard to read on the PowerPoint. That's why I gave you the book. You may follow as I'm going through. The next element of the LCFF is called supplemental grant. It's based on 20% of the base grant. You may think, you know, LCFF is a simple method of funding school business. Absolutely not. It's more complicated. I call baby will not born unless you go C-section. This is kind of where, how I described. So there's no normal way to understand the school funding and I'll be honest with you. So if you look at this, this is a complication, this is more complication. We thought it was complicated prior to now. It is more complicated now. The supplemental grant, 20% base grant, is based on your EL students, English learner, free and reduced and foster care students. Our ESD, October 2012, our unduplicated account is 79%. It's not the total free and reduced, it's unduplicated. We can account the same students in EL and also free and reduced. It will be, you can't count twice. What that mean by unduplicated account? Funding is allocated through LCFF will be subject to comprehensive accountability requirement. What that means, the state will going to hold us accountable and we have to adopt a plan how we're going to spend the money by grade level, by three, all three different elements of the funding, you know, base grant, supplemental grant, and I'm going to cover concentration grant. So there's a full enforcement of the state will require the plan adoptions and others and which I'll cover later. The concentration grant, which is the third element of the LCFF funding model, is based on 50% of EL, English learner, free and reduced and foster care student exceeding 55% of enrollment. If any students enroll exceeding 55, then you get 50% of those category students servant under those categories. So there's three different elements. So there are three different ways to compute how we get funded. The key, important to remind you here, this supplemental grant concentration is like a more restricted program. If you remember categorical program, all the governance, then no longer is it all, everything folded into, called LCFF. There is a, some will remain there under these two categories called restrictions. There will be a lot of restriction. You have to spend the money where the money need to be for the students under those category. You cannot use that money for other purposes. That's why they're breaking into three different category of funding sources. The concentration grant, yes, I'm sorry.
Hi Mohammed. So we're having EL students, period, our large population, we get 20% of the base grant.
Right.
But then if our EL population is higher than 55% of our enrollment, we get an additional 50%? So we get both or one?
Is 50% is based on, if you're exceeding 55% of the enrollment?
Right. So it's only for the students that exceed 55%?
Right. You get 20%. Thank you. Continue to, the funding allocated to LCFF will be subject to comprehensive, you heard me saying this again, is both category, is a plan and Board going to adopt the plan and state and county superintendent school going to monitor how the plan is working and final outcome of the plan, the student's success. Is the students really achieving? Are we meeting our goal? So again, it could be our plan adopted by the governing board and monitored by the state and the county superintendent school. So it's a fully enforced, so it's a, again, they're going to hold us accountable if we are not spending the money and the result is not there. Continue to the next bullet, your K-3 CSR, class size reduction program. It will be funded 10.4% of K-3 base grant. What that mean is not, state is not funding 100% beginning 2013-14. It will be fully funded over the next eight years. They're funding based on, into phase over eight years. So this year, they'll be funded 10.4%. Next year, they'll be funded another, let's say, 15% and on and on, all the way 2019-20 to be fully funded. By doing this, as you can see, the class size, they're required that we have to maintain 24:1 ratio. You have to, do we need to maintain 24:1 to ratio now? Answer is no. When do we have to maintain 24:1? When it will be fully funded fiscal year 2019-20. But there's a catch on this requirement. The catch is if the governing, if the school district, local school district negotiated higher rate, then you don't have to, you're not, you don't have to maintain 24:1. In our case, we have a 32:1 ratio. We negotiated through our contract. So that is options. You know, if district want to go at this rate, lower the ratio, it has to go to negotiation because our negotiations maintain higher class size reductions, which is a 32:1. But that will not jeopardize the funding. State going to continue funded. They give us an option. Many district did not increase the class size at that level. But many district has removed the class size entirely, as you know, because of the fiscal conditions. So returning back to 24:1 is required once it get fully funded. If district go back to the negotiation and you can return back to 24:1.
So if we're not meeting the accountability requirements, would we just like lose this money the next year? They would not give it to us again?
No, we're not, we're not losing funding.
No, no. If we do not meet the accountability requirements that they are going to set for us?
What are the penalties?
What are the penalties?
There's no more, the penalty, this ratio has to maintain by school by school, not average.
No, I'm not talking about the ratio.
I'm getting a penalty. The penalty is you're going to lose entire funding.
That's right.
You're going to lose entire funding. Again, the old rules, let me refer back to old rules. It used to be 20:1.
Right.
When you maintain the class size reduction K-3, then state give us a flexible rule. Remember, we did not maintain that and we get a penalty. There's a scale of the penalty up to 30%. We maintain the program with the penalty. We get funded with the penalty. That's the reason we could bring our class size all the way to 32%. Is every class maintain 32:1? Answer is no. So class maintain below 32:1, we get funded with the penalty. Now, when the new LCFF funded, they're saying the penalty will be, you will lose entire funding. And the 24:1 is not the district wide average. It will be school by school. So there's other catch in this rules, you know. So if you maintain one school 24:1, the other school is 25 or 30, then you did not maintain the program.
But just in terms of whatever the accountability, the growth they want to see and things like that, if that is not satisfactory or does not meet the requirements, say at the end of 2014, do we lose that money for the following school year?
Are you talking about the supplemental concentration round of accountability?
I'm talking about
You're doing K-3.
LCFF total, you know, this special funding we're getting because of our population.
No, there's several elements. So we cannot mix the elements, one element to other elements. Your base grant is, you're going to receive the base grant based on
I understand.
Your supplement and concentration, yes. You can lose the funding. State put a, take over the school. There's other, they can enforce other things. We don't know yet. Those details are not available at this time. As it's available, I'm going to bring it to the governing board. When you adopt a plan, the plan is they're going to monitor our plan and how effectively we are working our plan for the success of our students and their, achieving their goal. The fact of the matter is, these two, these two categories of the funding, yes, back to Nancy, what you're saying, you can lose the funding and at the same time, you may also, state can take over the schools. And the loss of funding. It can happen both. But those detailed conditions, guideline is not available at this time.
When we lose funding, if we lose funding, that would be for the entire district? Even though it was just one school that we failed at?
For these two category, we don't know that detail, what you asking for at this time. It could be that particular school, as you recall, the QUIA money.
Right.
I assume that's the way they're going to operate, but we don't know that, I couldn't give you a straight answer today. But I'm assuming that's the way they're going to operate. So continue, you can see, Toby Faison, they're going to do percentage increase every year over the next eight years and to get full implementation of the K-3 CSR. Continue to the next slide and I do apologize, I know, I know some of the, if you look at the PowerPoint, you can read on the screen, but that's why I gave you the book. You may want to follow. The other programs, career tech education funding is equal to 2.6% of grade 9 to 12 base grant. So everything is based on this, we call entitlement, which is called base grant and is factored based on the base grant. Your next bullet, home to school transportation funding and we call TIG, Target Instruction Improvement Grant, remains separate add-on. Let me explain to you what that mean. They are not built into any one of those three elements of the LCFF model, meaning base grant, supplemental grant and concentration grant. They will be maintained as separate funding for the purpose of the program. The condition of the funding will remain same, meaning we have to continue provide the home to school transportation funding used for its purpose. As you recall, some district discontinued the program. They will not get funding anymore. We sustain the program. We're going to continue to get funding. So there's a winner and loser in this case. Because we have the program. This is all based on your 12, 13, what district has, how we operated. We continue operating our home to school transportation. So we will be continuing to funding and fund should be used for that purpose. Can you use that money for something else? Answer is no. Continue to the next bullet, the Target Instruction Improvement Grant funding can be used for any educational purpose. That give us a lot of flexibility. You recall this, it's called court order desegregation. It's a new name. It's called Target Instruction Improvement Grant funding. But that can be used for any education purposes. Your other category, Special Act, Child Nutrition Qualified Education Investment Act, which called QUIA, and after school education safety program and other federal program are not including the formula. So anything you're calling federal program, Title I, you name it, they are not built in into the LCFF model. Again, it's a state program, but with exception of those three programs I just gone over. Special Act will maintain the funding. Child nutrition is, maintain the funding, QUIA and after school program. Traditional method of receiving state categorical funding is gone. So we used to call the, all the categorical program, they're not there anymore, with exception of few. Continue to the next slide, common core funding. This is something new to us, new to all of us. You remember the governor's mayor revised, he proposed $1 billion. The legislators raised that money to 1.25 billion. It's a good news, meaning we will get more money. So the state budget provide 1.25 billion statewide, one-time fund for implementation. I want to emphasize this, one time. And the funding will be based on $200 per students. It's not ADA, per students. Our ESD share of $5.3 million. This is new money and has a purpose. This is one-time money again, can be spent over two fiscal years, beginning this fiscal year. We'll get 50% of the money this year. Other 50% is next year. Now, district, here's the condition of the funding. District can spend the fund for the following. Your professional development, instructional materials aligned to the common core standard and technology. The other conditions of the funding, the district, we must have a plan. Board, governing board has to develop and adopt an expenditure plan detailing how the funds will be spent. That's the way state going to monitor and hold us accountable. The plan must be adopted and the public hearing must be held on the, on the plan. So it has to be open, public hearing and open session and Board need to adopt the plan.
Is there a deadline for having this plan concluded?
At this time, they didn't give us any deadline. There's no details available, but I think it's to be seen.
This is a comment. I think they're going to, by January, they're supposed to have a template out for us to use.
Okay.
And then also the money, something new, the money is all coming this fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the correction. Yeah. But we can spend over two years. So 5.3 million, thank you, Sharon. 5.3 million is coming all this year, but we can spend over two years. So it doesn't have to be all spent this year. Thank you. Continue to the next slide. This is, this is slide I like to draw your attention, Board. So make sure you, you know what I'm talking about. This is LCFF. And LCFF funding built on, based on COLA 1.565%. We, when we, we adopted the budget, we, we used this COLA and we billed this $7.85 million. This is a combination of 1.565 COLA and reduction of deficit factor from 22.272% to 18.997%. What that means, at that time, we've been told we could use this COLA for this year and, and reduce our deficit factor from 22, almost 23% to 18.997%, 19%. By doing this, we got, we build this additional funding for our 2013-14 adopted budget, the budget you adopted. But LCFF built all this funding into LCFF model. Your COLA reduction, there's no more deficit factor beginning this year. There's no more deficit. State going to fund it based on whatever the funding they have available and COLA. They're going to build COLA every year. So the bottom line, the LCFF gave us 10.5, little over 10.5 million. We accounted during the adoptions because we advised to use this, this factor. So we built 7.5. The increase now only need to be add-on to our adopted budget, little over 2.7 million. And to be clear, because LCFF gave us 10.5, we accounted 7.8. The additional money we have to add-on is 2.7. Meaning, we already take part of the increase by building, taking the COLA and reducing our deficit factor. As you remember, every year, we had a little over 22% deficit. Remember, I reported to you, we get 80 cents per dollar. Now, there's no more deficit. They're all built into the LCFF. Everything is a number you've seen earlier slide. It's a number. It's all, all built into the number. So there's no separate number percentage of COLA deficit reductions. The deficit reduction is not anymore. So by saying this, what did we gain? So we, we got 10.5 million, new money. Part of the new money we built in, in our adoption because we advised to do that by the county schools and the state. You see, you're good to use this because at that time, they knew, mayor revised. They gave us that advice. That's why we built into our adopted budget. And now we have this amount would be, you'll see at the next agenda for, as a part of 45 days revisions.
So the 5.8 million, we were supposed to make in cuts. We don't have to make anymore?
I'll cover that. If you hold your thought, Nancy, if you don't mind, I will cover that. If I want to make sure we're together as I'm going through, then I'll cover everything you may have. So this is an additional amount we're going to, you see at the next agenda as a part of our 45 days. You remember at the last board meeting, I did say, "I'm going to bring you 45 days revisions. Any revisions to the budget will be, will be coming to the Board for your approval." So this amount is increased to our general fund, additional amount. Continue to the next two years. As you can see, COLA, we, we've been advised to use 1.8%. And the way the LCFF going to fund it, I want to draw your attention, the COLA is going to give us 2.5 next year. And LCFF, we're going to bring 20, is the, remember, it's over eight years. Every year, they're going to give you additional amount. This is additional amount next year over this year. Make sense?
Yeah.
So this is a new amount we're going to be receiving next fiscal year. The difference is, is 499,000. And 2034 LCFF, we're going to, we have to bring that last year, this year number. So the combined total is 3.2. So you can see that this is going to be our increase to next fiscal year to our revenue for general fund. It's a, this year number plus the difference between COLA, the COLA is in this number. So COLA
And we maintain the LCFF for 2013-14 and we get the 2014-15 LCFF in addition to that?
Right.
Okay.
So, so the increase of 3.2. So you maintain, so every year, you got 2.7, 2014, then you got 3.2 on the top of 2.7.
And that includes 2.7?
Yeah, that include 2.7. You see, it built, it bring back 2.7. What I'm trying to draw your attention, the, prior to LCFF, we used to build only COLA and deficit. LCFF gave us an increase of 499, 499,000 because it, your COLA is already in here. Your deficit reduction is in here. So this is a total and the difference, we're showing you the difference. If the LCFF did not exist, we will get 2.5. Now we get additional half a million. Then you add this to the last year, 2.7. That give you the increase of total of 3.2 next year. Continue to the following year, COLA 2.2. And you recall, we didn't get COLA. We get deficit. On the top of COLA, even the governor said, "I'm giving you COLA, he raising the deficit." We didn't get COLA, but we get less reduction of funding year after year. So LCFF, good news is, it's not going to be less money. It will be gradually, we'll get more money. As you can see, 2.7 to 3.2 and going to 3.9. Same logic of 15, 16. The old method, we get COLA and the deficit. It was 3.2. LCFF will give us a little over 3.9. Increase of 794,000 and you add this to the 2.7 and the difference, 499, that increase of 300, 3.9, which is from 3.2, you're going to 3.9. So you can see the increase every year for next, the next eight years. Every year, we're going to increase our funding. Continue to the next slide. Now I'm showing you with the LCFF how we plan, how our revenue looks like unrestricted general fund. If you look at the, the pie looks different from last year or any prior year. Your 67% in, I'm sorry, 87%, I know the number is too small, is called now LCFF. Do you remember the revenue limit? Some of you remember the term. And now this, everything, all categorical money, everything fold into this number. So the percentage has gone up, your number is higher because of the LCFF. The other federal program is there and, and they're small for our districts and state. Other state, you heard me, then there remain as a restricted special ad, TIG, transportation that represent that 11% and, and the last category is other local, which is about 2%. That represent our total unrestricted general fund revenue of 160.4 million with the LCFF. We add that additional 2.7 million funding into this chart to just display today to show you how the money is going to come to districts and what's the distribution of the funding. Continue to the next slide. Is your expenditures, how we plan to spend the money this fiscal year. Again, it's a general fund, which is our operating program. If you, you can see that, one thing I like to draw your attention, Board. This is our expenditures for our general fund total. And you, some of you recalled, our labor cost was little over 92%. The percentage is low, 91.3. It's a direct result of layoff and everything else we have done for this, coming from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. I hope you remember it was a little over 92, it was 92.3. So it dropped to 91.3, to 91 by one, little over 1%. So it dropped to 91.3, to 91 by one, little, little over 1%. It's a direct result of everything board you acted on for this fiscal year coming from last fiscal year. So, and if you look at the category, you can see that our certificate aid is about 40% of our total expenditures. And this represent another salaries. And you can look at the management, only represent 4%, which is, looks pretty good to me because of, you remember 95.5 propositions many years ago, the meaning, we're to bring our administrative costs below 5%. That didn't pass. I think it's about 10 years ago. So our total certificate management is 4%. Our classified salaries is 14%, which is right here. And if you continue that chart, you can see management classified is 1%. Again, we're, we're within 5%, which is state title enforce that rule to the proposition, but it didn't pass. The employee benefit is the high, you can see 22%. That's it, you heard me and my concerns all, all along. And your books and supplies and other categories. That, that really display how we plan to spend our entire general fund, 154.2 million dollar for fiscal year 1314. Continue to the next slide.
Services and other operating expenses, what is that?
Your, your utility bills, your consultant and all other contract services we bring to run our businesses. So the large costs in here, your utility bills, your gas, electric, telephone and others, water bill and, and all the contracts we have to, to run our businesses. Example, student information systems. So that, that's pretty much.
What is capital outlay?
You're buying computers, any, any, anything you buy, you know, is we, there's a threshold, how much, if you, it costs more than 500, it goes as, in that category, it's not expensive, we capitalize. So like a computer.
Well, I would imagine we'd be buying an awful lot of technology this year because of Common Core for the following year, so.
Right, but the Common Core is, is.
That's a separate.
We, we don't have the, it is a separate, it's a restricted, this is unrestricted general fund. Thank you, I'm glad you caught that. Common Core is, is again, I mean, this is, is unrestricted general fund, which I'm presenting to you board tonight. And Common Core is, is a restricted general fund, restricted program. Continue to the next slide. I'm bringing to you, you board tonight is a historical trend of what's going on our enrollment, going back to 2007, 8 to present. If you look at the, our enrollment from 20, almost 30,000 or 29,000 to going, coming to 26, we lost, you heard me saying this, we lost about a little over 3,000 students over last seven years. We're, we're, I call we're soft declining now, it's not a flat. We're still, we don't know the final number this year yet, but I believe it will be pretty much going to flat. So meaning, we're not going to lose as many students we lost from going back 2007, 8. And you can see the numbers are, are sliding down all the way 2013, 14. So we don't anticipate measure loss on our enrollment coming from 2012 to 1314. I call it soft, will be soft landing on the enrollment. But it's still, the final number, I will report it back to you, once we get the school going to open next week, we'll know where the numbers are. But we're projecting pretty much close to the last year level. But the good news is, if you look at the ADA, which is the, the, to, to the next bar, we are 96%. And you can see, we, we, with a step up and other things that we have done over the years, that improve our attendance. And as you heard me saying, our ADA is a bread and butter for district. So I can show you this board, we, which we have done, there's increased 92% to 96%. Although enrollment went down, our ADA, we increased our ADA based, because of all the program we implemented over last few years. Continue to the next slide. This is the, I call it the most important slide for board to, I would like to draw your attention. This is multi-year projections, again, it's a general fund with LCFF. We are in budget year 1314 and, and as you know, the, we required three years plan, state required three years, although state only give us one year plan. We use best assumptions are available to build a three years plan. As you can see, our, our beginning balance, our books are not closed, so we, we know our books will be closed on about August 15. We projecting our, our ending balance, which is a beginning balance of 1314, a little over 19.6 million dollar. And because of everything we have done in, this, this is a one-time money. This is, because of everything board you approved, administrations implemented, everything, this is a good news, we have a good ending balance. But one thing I like to draw attention, even though we have good ending balance with the plan we have, we, we still have a deficit. And this is what we call operating deficit. And this is your unrestricted program, I'm not, you know, restricted program supposed to be self-balanced, as you can see, there's no deficit. The projected ending fund balance should be zero because they're, they're self-support. But your operating deficit, your unrestricted general fund, with everything we have done so far, we still have a problem, like, from my view. A little over 5 million dollar operating deficit, we built in part of our planned expenditures. How do we survive? Because we have large ending balance, that eating up our, our deficit and keeping us in a solvency. As you can see, the, after deficit, we have little over 13 million dollar projected ending balance. And, and that leading your reserve requirement, our reserve is, is a 3%. Is it right here, which is state required 3% reserve and the rest of them I call is available. But I don't want to mislead you by saying it's available. This available carry to year 1415. As you can see, that this is our projected beginning balance for unrestricted general fund. This number coming from right here. What we're projecting at the end of this fiscal year, we will have ending balance. That bank on next year plan. Carry for, taking that number into next year as a beginning number and, and everything we know now as a plan, carry forward to next year, we have an operating deficit of little over 4.5 million dollar. These are all projection, I want to be clear, it's not, it's not actuals, it's a projections, how we plan this year and subsequent two years. Projection can be changed, it's not a rocket, it's not a rock. So 4.5 million dollar operating deficit, because of we have a one-time beginning balance, large balance, that can absorb that deficit. We have a positive ending balance that carry our required reserve 6.7, little over 6.7 million dollar that leave you little ending balance available. Taking this, carrying forward to the next fiscal year, to 1516, you see 8.5 million dollar, little over 8.5, this represent this number. Ending balance of 131415 and bringing everything carry forward as the next year plan, 1516. And, and continue the same assumptions, we have a deficit of little over 3.4 million dollar and that is our problem. You can see the problem right here. This means we will not be able to maintain our 3% reserve. So we, again, next two years are good, but again, these are projections and, and this is a small change. I'm not, I'm giving anxiety to you tonight, board, that do we have to do anything right now? Absolutely not. Do we have to do anything this year? Not necessarily, but something I want to draw your attention, that are we completely out from the structural deficit problem? Answer is no, you can see that the line, a circle, every number, this is still as an ongoing concerns issue I, I like to express to you board as a board. So this leading to a 1516, we have a small problem. I call it small problem and that can be rectified throughout, throughout next two year. Certain assumptions can change, state assumption may change in terms of COLA and level of funding, so I don't want you overly concerned about this tonight. Continue to the next slide. I, I bring to you some of the concerns from my perspective. As you can see that your, I expressed to you over and over again, it's structural budget deficit ongoing. It's a problem. I call this a disease, we have to cure. And in order to cure, we have to go, we have to do, we have to draw an action plan. So this is, this is, this is all, this has been issue and the concern I have, I expressed to you tonight. Declining enrollment, I, I think we are, we're going to close the monitor, make sure we're not continue further declining. With the economy, everything is doing great, I hope our, it should not be an issue and concern, but at this time, for today, I would say I'm still concerned because we're still soft declining. We're not keeping at the level we have last year, year, year before. And there's no more minimum guarantee. You remember, minimum guarantee means you get funded at the prior year level even though you're declining. So this is going to, this is going to cost us, this is going to affect our, our fiscal conditions and status of the district if we're not closing monitoring this. The, yes.
So with all this increased revenue with the LCFF, we are still going to need to make cuts in order to maintain our reserves in three years?
At this time, I say, I would say, not knowing what you, I, I presented today, no, you don't have to do anything right now. And I don't expect to do anything this fiscal year, possibly next year, because some of the things, I mean, my assumption is based on what I know today. Certain assumption will change as the economy is, is gradually getting better and COLA may go up, state may funded to LCFF get more funding, we get, we may receive next year and following year. So it's, I call this a premature event, not, to say that, do we have to act now? Answer is no.
The thing about the enrollment, that sometimes districts get caught up in a fall because you say you get money from the state, but your enrollment is declining. That's the heartbeat of what we do.
Right.
If you, if you, enrollment is declining and you still have the same number of staff, eventually, it's gonna fall completely out. You manage where, if you do get extra money in state, from the state you have, you're, you maximize what you have for your reserve and even for employees. But if enrollment start, if we stabilize, we can level ourselves off. But if enrollment depends, continues to decline, staff continues to decrease.
Right.
Because they exist because of enrollment. We even, in trying to explain to teachers, it's students that drive what we do.
Right.
When they start disappearing, money is gonna, the state wouldn't be able to give us enough to cover the losses for enrollment. So you, you want to at least get to a point where we stabilize or we at least keep our level of employees consistent with the number of students that bring in that kind of money.
Thank you, Dr. Silverman, this absolutely correct, enrollment is our bread and butter. And without, if enrollment drive everything, what do we do every day here?
Perhaps we can, somewhere in your future, we can do a study session on the different factors that go into declining enrollment, what, what are some of the things we can do to try to increase enrollment, prevent students from leaving our district to go to other neighboring districts and whatnot, some of the things we can look at.
Sure.
You know, there's other factors that we have no control over, people move out and whatnot, but as far as I'm concerned, Rialto hasn't been losing too many resident citizens. So why, why is our enrollment?
Well, the, the one factor I may want to show the enrollment is aging populations. You may be living still in Rialto, you have no children going, going to schools, meaning you are still resident of the Rialto and aging populations, unless you migrate and, and you live out of town, you bring young family in town, then your enrollment, like I use myself as example, my daughter is finished school, I'm still living in the city and same school boundary, my residency does not help the school anymore with the lost two kids.
And, and there's, I'm sure there's other factors too.
Yeah.
Maybe a study session that put all the stuff.
Sure, no, no, we can do that, we can do that.
Because there was about, at least three to four years where the foreclosure rate.
Yes.
And the city rate was very high. And that's where you saw decline in population, a lot of people moving even to, went to Valley and, and other places where home prices were cheaper. And I don't think that is happening as much as it was three or four years ago.
There's no.
And.
The wealth.
Right. So as you were saying, not only aging population is the one factor, there's other factor, economy, you know, housing market, job opportunity in Rialto or surrounding area, all these factors affect our enrollment, you know, and, and, and the crime, other things, you know, people, how many people migrate in here or how many people migrating are somewhere else. So all this being affected.
The one thing that happened with Cordia, Cordia was built pending some things being, homes being built around there. We keep hearing that it's coming soon or whatever, that would really be a boost for that. And I know Joe doesn't want to hear this, but if that guy built those homes for golf course.
But I still have a golf course.
It'd be another boost because otherwise trap sits there with not anything happening. And you look at Traps enrollment compared to Cordia, they could really be one school.
Yes.
But you anticipating some growth because of the population being increasing with homes being built in the area, and so you saw it in a waiting period right now.
So economy drives everything, again, you're right, and if you look at Rialto, how many housing project going on or how many business coming back or, or opening new business and job opportunity that drive the people coming back to Rialto with the family, with the young kid. We did, we did, you recall board, I, we did present to you 70 years projections, enrollment projections, it does show that district going to continue decline for main reason is aging populations, but they are still living in the, in the, in the city of Rialto, but there have no, no children going to schools because their children's already finished schools.
We're still more senior development.
Right, right. But that doesn't count in our enrollment. That doesn't, we cannot bank on, so you're right. The other two category, I have a concern, you, most of you know this, rising healthcare costs, our cost is going up year after year, as you can see the pie chart I explained to you, 22% is pretty high. We need to manage this cost and we cannot control the industry premium going up every year after year. On the top of that, you, you, the healthcare reform is enforcement is, is ahead of us and is going to raise our costs even furthermore. So those are to be seen. You may recall, you probably know by now, the, we've been given extension one more year. The implementation was January 2014, now it's extended to January 2015. So that's a good news, but it still is a concern. How it's gonna affect our part-time employees and how we have to provide them insurance? If any employee 30 hours or more, we have to provide them insurance. And, and that's kind of where the cost is going to be a concern to us in a way to add costs.
That's new compared to five, six years ago.
Yes, yes. This is a new, this is a new cost to the employer, or any employer, not only in school districts, this is Obamacare and, and you heard that. And this is coming ahead of us. And this not being, at this time, we didn't build anything into our next two years plan because all the details are not available. With a further extending one more year, we're still good to go for next two years. And this will have a huge impact on our, our businesses and our costs, our health costs. Continue to the next slide. I bring some priority as I've been here almost a year. It concerns me a lot of things, I shared with Dr. Silverman, as my boss, as a superintendent, I bring my concern to him first. These are category things I bring, one is small category, I have a concern at the technology, how we district operating, it's not, you know, district wide. I'm, I'm, I'm not only talking about instructional technology, I'm speaking everything, offices, how old are our systems, our, our devices we have, they're obsolete. And we're, we're still, it's like you're driving a 1984 Ford Pinto, some of you remember the car. You need to pull inside and you'll get citation. I drove that car, so I remember that car. You need to pull inside and you'll get citation. I drove that car, so I remember that car. And I did race with that car, I know with someone. So, so I'm just sharing to the technology, I, I have a major concern to the, to you board. And, and I've expressed this concern to Dr. Seabrook. The other category, as you drive around and visit our schools, some of the funding, even the state gave us, so we call flexible. It didn't help us, it put our condition even worse. Because we didn't maintain our routine repair maintenance and deferred maintenance program. We, we exercised those flexible rule, it helps us maintain a fiscal solvency. What it did to us, deferring our problem for later date, the condition of the schools. And, and, and it looks terrible with some of the facility, you can see it. So I call environment makes a big difference for learning for our students. I believe that.
And I have visited every school. We have a lot of work to do. And I think that it has to be our huge priority this year. And every, every child deserves to go to a clean, well-maintained, attractive school that promotes learning. And some of our schools don't look that way.
You absolutely correct. And that's why I'm bringing those as a concerns from my perspective to you as a board. Because we, we are responsible here to provide the best, best facility for our children to learn the best.
And some of these things, Mohammed, like for example, information technology. Our own IT people have previously told us that they were working and doing the best that they could with what they had. You know, and for example, staff recommended some years back that we did an audit on, on IT department. And they even concluded, you know, you're using computers that are 10 years old. And, and same thing with maintenance, you know, I've worked for a lot of people in maintenance, you know, our schools.
Oh, terrible.
You know, are, some of them are falling apart.
But this is, I'm not pointing finger to anybody, it is a conditions that we've been placed by the state by, due to the deficit, lack of funding. State didn't fund it, that's 100%. It forced us to go there. And it's like the economy forces many homeowners to foreclose. And we did not cause this, from administrative perspective, I'm not saying we ignored this. We, lack of funding, we cannot do anything. So funding was not there. So I'm bringing this issue now, as funding is available, we need to prioritize, looking at what is our district priority? Then we need to, I'm putting from my perspective, from, you know, I want every child to get the best of the best. And that's why I'm bringing to you from my perspective. You may have other category you may want to bring, you know, go ahead.
Dr. Seabrook, could we see what a four-year refresh plan out of the general fund would look like rather than out of the school budgets? That way it's continuing to roll and it's, it really doesn't impact anybody but the general fund.
Right.
That way it's going to happen, it's not whether the principal can afford it.
We can show you that. The other problem that I think most of us who have lived around a little while through good and bad times. You get a new facility, how long was it new? And you, I take, I look at Werner and Rialto Mill is a good example. The people that are there have decided, we're going to keep it this way. When you walk in Werner and, and Rialto Mill, they look like they've just been built. We have a lot of schools where the pride, we have to start, besides the people working there, the people that live there have to take pride. I go back to Texas, my old junior high school, the floor that we played basketball, you can still see, see your future on that floor, it still shines. But somebody decided that we may not have a lot, but this is ours, we're going to have to take care of it. So when you get involved in maintenance, that just doesn't involve the workers and the funds that come in. It also involves care from everybody that goes there. And within teaching our kids how to care, how not to tear up things. Because I've seen some new schools that don't look new in two years because we destroyed them. So it's, it's a whole comprehensive thing, but I agree with you. If we have, if we see where we can maintain continuous repairs and keeping things up, then we have to decide when we do that, we're going to keep it that way.
And I think maybe we could look at initiating campus pride programs at every school with the students and the staff. And kind of have some guidelines for them, maybe competitions going on, things like that. That will encourage the kids to help, you know, clean up and not make things, make the problem worse.
So the category, you see the routine repair maintenance, it's ongoing maintenance, we have to maintain the facility. It's not that because you build brand new school, you don't have to do nothing. Then, then over the years, the school are, looks like in a terrible condition. So we, we exercise the flexible rule in this two category, because the state gave us a flexible, use this funding to help us a general fund. It used to call restrictive, that's why it's called restricted routine repair maintenance. It used to be a restricted program and this used to be a restricted program, the state gave us a flexible rule, we exercise that. As a result, we, we took entire deferred maintenance fund, little over $2 million. One, little over $1 million, state funded our deferred maintenance, other is general fund match, it's called 50/50. So the program was a little over $2 million program. We freeze that program. That is supposed to do roofing, measure work for state, district wide. We cannot do anything with no more, no funding is available. The same thing in routine repair maintenance, we, we supposed to, we required by law 3% of the general fund. Because state give us a flexible rule, we did not maintain 3%. To bring this two program alone, you have to add back to the, back to the level it should be. You're talking about $3 million restore the program. $2 million for deferred and one, little over $1 million for routine repair maintenance. We do funding, we don't fund at 3% level, it's a little over 2.6. So the difference, I'm talking about the little over $1 million. So that's two program is, concerns me a lot because it's the condition of the schools.
So you said, we did not need.
State, state does not require, they give us a flexible rule, you don't have to maintain this two program.
No, no, but we said.
We did not maintain it.
We don't have, yeah, we exercise the flexible rule, we did not maintain 3%, no.
We decided to maintain our people.
We meant, we kept up.
Well, I mean, what other reason is, but, but, so in other words, we're not required.
We're not required and the option was given to us. If you want to maintain, you're healthy, you're okay. But you don't have to, old rules was you are required, you don't, you have no choice.
We're only required to maintain, they've lowered it to 1%.
1%.
1%.
Okay.
And we're doing 2%, we're doing 2.6, but we could have gone down to 1.
Yeah, we, we did pretty good.
But it's not mandated?
No.
Okay.
That's what I'm flexible, flexible rule.
So we fall in a hole.
That's why.
That's the recommendation, that's recommended.
We just have to make it a priority, well, they recommend it or not.
Well, can we increase the amount of money?
Well, that's my, I'm bringing to you as a priority, as funding is available, board, I'm, I like, this is my recommendation to you. And with your approval, wherever funding is available, we need to prioritize, as I'm expressing to you tonight. You know, some of the things we need to bring back at the level of the funding we need to maintain the schools and improve the condition of the schools.
And some of the elementary schools, the older elementary schools seriously need storage.
Yes.
Because if you walk in the classroom, the kids are usually in groups. And they, you can't, they can't even see each other because their books and pencil boxes are all piled up in the middle of the desk. I mean, I saw this over and over again, so.
Yes.
And that's a horrible environment to learn in.
We have a lot.
We can get some cabinets and things.
You're correct. There's a lot we have to do in the facilities area. I'll be honest with you, I've seen it, I'm really, you know. We have to put, put our resource back to, to, to help our condition of our schools. The other couple category, I would bring it for you, discussion tonight. Furniture, equipment, I have concerns, I've seen many classrooms, the condition of the broken chair, terrible condition. Some of them chair, today's child will not fit there because of the McDonald and eating all the milkshake. I'm, I, I try, I say, I couldn't believe that those chairs are still in the classroom. The keys are big, they're tall, you know, every size, you know, you look at, but it's not the.
Some of them are just squeezed in.
Oh, incredible. Those are metal chairs, I've seen it, I, I'm bringing to you board, I'm concerned, you know, that's why I'm bringing to you. I've seen it, it's not that somebody has to tell me. And we don't have, we need to consider this because the children's are close to our bottom of our heart, you know. We cannot let them just be suffer. So any funding is available, I like to consider those other category. The other two category are called restore programs. Any program administration board want to consider. And other, I left a blank other, if there's anything else board, you may want to bring as, as, as funding is available. Am I saying, do I have funding available for all this category? Answer is no, not yet. But as funding is available, I would like to recommend to the Dr. Seabrook. And bring it to, all the way to the governing board for your considerations. But these are the things comes in my mind as a priority we should have. Not, not giving a raise or, or adding more positions of people. Because we have a responsibility here, we cannot just defer any longer. That's my honest statement, we cannot keep on differing.
They've hoovered together 91.3% staffing down closer to the 85%.
Right. But at the end of the day, it affect, it affect our, our, our children's in school. And their, their, their future of our kids and their success. So I, I don't take very lightly on this, I'm really meaning what I'm saying today.
And one of the things that keeps people from leaving a school district is high performing schools, so.
Right, that's right.
That will attract.
You're correct. People willing to pay the price, buying the expensive house, small home because of the school, because the performance, you're correct. And continue to the next slide is, is all yours now. But I have other things I want to cover before I go there, if you have anything you'd like to. No, because I'm not, my timeline is 5:30, so I'm, I told, I told Dr. Seabrook I'm going to stay with my timeline. But at this time, I want to invite the board, anybody has any, any comment or anything you'd like to be clear on this PowerPoint? Before I proceed in the next, other things I have. If you don't have, I will proceed to the next slide. This slide, board, you may have seen during the adoption time. You express a concern, I'd like to just walk you through, at least you understand.
If you look in the next tab, there's a bigger.
Yeah, there's a tab. We, okay, you'll find, yeah, this is. So this is small, you can read from the, on the PowerPoint screen, please follow the book you have. I assume everybody has a copy of the report. Basically, what I'm, I'm sharing this to you, you can see this report is a state format. It's not a, I, I could make it bigger, but I want to let you see the, the way we're required to submit the report to the state. It is not my format, it is not, I purposely make it small so you can see the number. My point is. My, my point is, this, so you cannot, as you can see the report at later date, you, you will recognize that format. If you see it in, in here, it's a two different fiscal year. We call them 13, 1213 and 1314. This is your operating budget. This is your, last year, how we're going to, as we're closing the books, you saw some of the number I, I presented to you previous slide. Where's the number coming from? If you look at the total revenue line, it, it's just, you know, within the red, you can see it. This is your unrestricted general fund, this current last fiscal year, 1213. This is our restricted program and to you right is a total. Follow this, 1314, your unrestricted general fund revenue total. And the category, you can see that, so the, the first category says revenue limit is not going to exist anymore. They, it will be LCFF. But the, the, this is what you adopted on June 23rd, this is, this is the report you adopted. And you can see 1314, the total revenue unrestricted general fund and restricted and combined total. And you can see the change percentage from this fiscal year, meaning 1213 to 1314. And it gives you, explain to you the increase or reduction in the revenue. Continue to the expenditure category, you can see the broad category salaries, and I will not go every line by line for the interest of the time.
Why if we make cuts, are we spending $5 million more in salaries this year?
Which, which line are you in?
Oh, no, okay, I see, because they said more were unrestricted and less were unrestricted.
Right, so, so if you, if you look at the expenditures category is, is the next category, it's called category B. And they're, they're, they're right here. And they're, they're, and you see all the category of how we plan to spend, how we spend 1213. And how we plan to spend 1314. And you can see the total expenditures, combined general fund, little over $219 million total line here. And to you right is what we plan to spend 1314. And this is your revenue over the expenditures, it's called access, if there's any. And you can see that we have a combined total, we have a 13 point here as a deficit. And I will explain to you what that mean. And what you see the 1314, 1314 is a, is a lower number. Because everything we implemented this year, our deficit went down with the LCFF. LCFF really helped us big time, I'm going to be honest with you. And on here, I'm sorry.
Lifesaver.
I call lifesaver, you're correct. That's what L stand for and F stand for, it's like a lifesaver at the end, you know. But the fact of the matter is.
Are we still going to have to do trans?
But they're using that, I'm sorry.
We are.
I'm sorry, Nancy.
He's asking if we're still going to have to do trans for this year.
I will cover that, if you hold that thought, please, and I'll cover that at the end. So I want to make sure you, you understand this, the report, what, why the format and how it looks like. In the bottom, you can see the contributions right here. I'm losing my pointer. The, you can see the, the contribution, $14.2 million. Your, this is for this year. And to you right, you can see almost same, this is for our special ed, home to schools and others. So our special ed is costing us a lot of money. Because this, we are required by law, we cannot just say, it's cost money, we cannot serve the kid because of the condition, no, we cannot do that. You and I would end up in jail, I don't want to go in jail. So it's required by law, even though it costs us money. So the fact of the matter, you can see how much is the contributions, the money we're not getting from the state or federal, it drawn from your general fund. So, so this money is not, this is our money, in order to maintain the program required by law. State not paying us every dime we need to help the kid with the condition. So special ed, home to school and others.
14 millions out of the general fund in addition to what we get from the federal government.
Yes. Because it's a mandate. So continue to the next slide. It's carried forward, you can see the beginning balance coming from last fiscal year. And you projected our ending balance and, and 1415, that number you see on the pie chart. And what are the elements of the fund balance? And these are the required by law, we have to, we have a store, revolving cash and 3% required reserve. You can see the number right here. This is 1213 and 1314. That leading to your available balance, as I'm seeing available balance means that one time. And we carry forward that money into the 1415. This, for last year, we bring it to this year and, and to cover our deficit spanning. So 1314, we're projecting a small available balance at this time. But that already, we already bank on this available for 1415 fiscal year. So is this money available for doing anything at this time? Answer is no. It's only been accounted for. They're, they're accounted for as a one time rollback to the following fiscal year. That's pretty much, I have a PowerPoint, but I'd like to go over other things you have in the book. At this time, do you have anything you may want to, everything I covered, you, you like to, you need further clarifications or you? Okay, if I'm going too fast, you can raise your hand, I will slow down. But I promise I'll let you get out by 5:30 because we have an event tonight. The, the other things you have in your books, if you open the next, the letter, budget approval letter. The one, you already saw the report I presented to you. This is the letter we received, on board, I assume you're getting in your board package, it's coming. And I highlight, I want to thank the board and administration, what we have done, it's a result, here's a result. Many school districts is in trouble in our county, they're, they're our neighbor, Alpland, Fontana. They're our neighbor, Alplin, Fontana, Colton. You don't know yet. We, because of what you have done, I thank you for doing this. All the resolutions and adoptions on time, our letter confirm our officially, we approved. We approved budget. If we have not done everything, we, we are required to maintain the fiscal solvency. I could not present this letter to you tonight. I'm proud to present to you tonight. I'm also proud that what you did to make it happen. I don't take credit for the, I give credit to governing board and superintendent for that. With your support, we get there. Otherwise, we, you could see disapproved budget. That I, I told Dr. Seabrook, I don't want to, ever want to present that kind of letter to the, my superintendent or governing board. So I thank you for doing this. So it expressed on this letter, if you haven't read this letter or you have not seen yet, you're getting a copy. This is a letter went to board and superintendent and this letter to me. And it, it, it expressed some of the concerns I shared to you tonight. You may want to read this letter and help you understand what I've been expressing to you is no different than what they expressed on the letter. This letter represent the report I, we present to them as an official report adopted, adopted by the governing board. It highlights some of the concerns, going concerns as we moving forward this fiscal year and next fiscal year and, and year after. So I will let you read, read this at your later term and it will help you to fall asleep.
Is there anything in here, is there any recommendations aside from the ones that, you know, that you've been making?
Yes. Well, it's not recommendations, it's the concerns. There's concerns where our ninety-two percent that will express to you the percentage of the, our people costs. They've been expressing concerns that you have seen in previous letter. Also, our health welfare cost is really way out of line and and deficit spending. Deficit spending and declining one. These are the broad category I share with you and it's also expressed on the ladder. If we don't manage those costs, then it could lead us into a problem.
What do they have to say regarding the trans borrowing?
I'm going to cover that. Trans, the borrowing cash is, is, is not fiscal solvency issue. It's an operational issue. How you pay your bill, how you pay employee. The, I'm going back to no trend since you're asking me. I appreciate it. The trend is, is, we never had a trend and many of you recall and Dr. Seabrook, you remember, you and I've been many of us in this business for a long time. We never borrow money. We never. State placed us in that situation because they're not, they're paying eighty cents per dollar. We have an obligation for dollar. Where are you getting other twenty cents? We don't have a rich uncle here to help us, to bail us out. So we borrow money. That's why we got the trend coming for temporary borrowing. That's why it's called trend stand for. But the fact of the matter, it forces to borrowing because of high deficit, not paying us on time. Leading us, how do we meet our obligations? How we pay our employee on time? We cannot tell our employee IOU because the state doesn't pay us. Then board, you, you get people in this room, every board meeting. How they're going to pay the bill? So that forces me, meeting our obligation, we have to borrow money. So trend is, is, is a, is a, I call new problem. It happened last four, five years because of the state not funding our program at the level and they're called deferral. You heard that the term deferral. Deferral means it's like IOU. You worked, you're telling your employee, continue, Mr. Manja, you run business. So, no, you're going to work for me. I'll pay you someday. That your employee will be gone tomorrow. Am I right?
Well, that's why we, you know, that's why we have to operate in our means.
Right. But, but, but the deferral is not, we didn't mean, deferral is, is, you're still running your business, we didn't mean. But, but you still have a problem. You don't have a cash. The cash is meeting our, paying our payroll, paying our vendor, buying books and supplies for our students, paying our teachers. How we can be in business if we don't borrow money and paying our, our employee? Ninety-two percent borrowing is, goes to people cost.
We need help to build up our account and then we can use our own money. Like if I built up my savings account and I needed money for something, I could pull it out of my savings account and that way I'm not paying outrageous amounts of interest for borrowing the money.
In other words, I, I think it'd be, of course, if we could not have to borrow.
Right.
But, but, but other districts do borrow too.
Yes, yes.
And that amount that they borrow varies.
Oh, yes.
Which districts borrow, some districts
Small to large, you're small to large.
Some districts don't borrow. Other districts don't just borrow trans monies, but they, they borrow, you know, capital. What do they call the, the ones where they get taxed a hundred, a thousand times? Paying interest like what happened in San Diego or some other districts, capital appreciation bonds.
Cap, you go to, yes.
Yeah. You know, so the trans, if we borrowed twelve point, twelve point four million last year, which we're scheduled to pay back in January of next year. How, how does it, in other words, are we gonna, are we at a point right now where we're gonna, every year gonna have to keep borrowing trans money?
We believe with the governors, with the place a new funding model, the, the borrowing and trend will disappear over the years. Are we, are we out from borrowing this fiscal year? Answer is no.
What about next year?
Our numbers will go down. Our borrowing will gradually going down because with the LCFF, we're going to funding governors saying they're going to pay us on time. The deferral is gradually going to pay us back, there are no more deferrals over the years. So it may take a couple of years by the time we, we get out. But my, my report to you tonight, are we completely out from borrowing this year or next year? And says, no. But it will scale down big time. Next year, we're projecting to borrow this year about twelve point four million dollar. You remember, we borrow over sixty million dollar. So his numbers are going down. And eventually, as the state paying us on time, we don't, we are going out of that borrowing business. The borrowing costs us money and state are not funding the cost of the borrowing. And that's what we call, we are going to challenge, but that being issue and concerns we've been experiencing to the state for many years. That you're putting us in a conditions, forcing us to borrow to meet our obligations. Because it's not our fault, it is the state. And because of the economy and everything else.
The thirty-five million dollar, the thirty-five million projected if borrowed, is that projected by our district or is that projected by the county?
When you say thirty-five, where are you getting that number?
From the letter. And it projected thirty-five million.
Yeah.
Which would need to be repaid by August two thousand fourteen if borrowed.
Right. That's the number we've told the board, the, to our report that we're going to borrow to meet our obligations. And trend is you have to pay back, there's the timeline within the fiscal year. And then you borrow again to go across fiscal year because of the, how funding works. So this, what you're referring to the ladder, it is our information, we told the, to how we're going to meet our obligations in terms of cash. So I don't want to confuse the cash requirement versus your, your deficit spending is two different thing. Cash is cash. You, you're paying your bill every day. And so this cash, state is not completely out from deferral. They're going to pay two point one billion dollar deferral money this year. And, and gradually they're going to pay as money they received, they have over, to the proposition thirty. Remember the proposition thirty, you and I paying those income tax and sales tax. They're banking on that money to get out from deferral. As soon as they gather deferral, then we're getting our money on time. Then we'll be out from trend.
Let me, let me say this too. Four, five years ago, maybe six years ago, when districts were not getting their apportionment slate. There was no borrowing. And what happened is the districts that accumulated huge reserves with less needs, they didn't have to borrow. Now their needs are increasing and their reserves are decreasing also. So even districts that had money at one time, because of what they've had to do to make up, they don't have it now. The, it really puts you in, in the, I don't know very many states that operate this way. Where the worst thing you can do, you can say, we're not going to borrow at all. We're going to wait till the state gives us our money. We'll, we'll all be running for free one because it'll create total chaos. So it's almost become an understanding that that's just the way we operate here in California. And what you're saying, eventually, if you could ever get to a place where you're creating your own little monies, where you don't get there, you'd be in good shape. But you forget that as you create these other little monies, you have employee needs too. They, they, they want raises and everything else. So it, it puts you in a situation, I know one district in East Whittier. They never had to borrow. They've had huge reserves. They will this year. Because they gave some raises, things have kind of caught up with them. It's just a state, if we could ever get them to, they looked at LCFF and all this other stuff, they could look at just getting an apportionment sometime. That would really help us a lot more than some of the other little things that they kicked in.
My, my only, my main concern with the borrowing is the, I mean, the interest that we paid over the past few years is in the millions. I mean, that's not chump change.
No.
That's a lot of money that students are not receiving because we're paying interest on this borrowing. We'd go out of business if we didn't get paid. We can't
Right.
We're comparing it forward to samples.
Right. But the fact of the matter
Any business wouldn't be able to survive without being paid.
You're right. And the fact of the matter, you know, three percent required reserve doesn't pay even our one payroll. One month of payroll. Because it's three percent, so is, some districts adopted by the governing board, adopted and administration recommendations to raise that reserve. As you're saying, if your money set aside, you can manage that money, not touching this money to negotiate another thing. Then you could keep, it's called rainy day money. The rainy day is here. So if there's no money available, then you cannot cover that.
Dr. Seabrook, I know we're short on time, but if you could briefly just give us a quick overview or an explanation. The difference between the districts that were labeled Title One, took Title One money, Title One programs, had those categoricals, hired all those employees, then the money dried up. And then the schools who didn't have a need for those Title One programs. So, see, that's an effect.
The basic difference too is what, what goes along with what he's saying. When you borrow money, really borrow mostly for your payroll. If your payroll stays the same, you're going to continue to borrow the same. If it doesn't, we don't decrease the number of employees here. Now what happens with the categorical? I happen to work in a district for seven and a half years. Well, we had no categoricals. The district existed exclusively, exclusively off of eighty-eight. These number of students we have, this number of money we have. Because the categorical, it depends on what those people feel like in Washington. When they had that last sequestration cut, it just almost wiped categorical out. It didn't hurt districts that weren't using it, but all the districts that were using it. And we have a huge number of employees, even reduced now, that are paid for exclusively out of categorical. Our needs are a lot different than some of these other districts that don't use it. So it puts us in a situation where you're just trying to balance most times. But if that payroll stays the same, your number of employees stays the same and you're borrowing for payroll, you'll be borrowing the same amount of money. Yeah. We have to start decreasing numbers across the board as the declining enrollment hits us.
What is, Mohammed, what, I saw that we only get five point seven percent of our funding from property taxes here in reality. What, what's average or like a more higher socioeconomic area like Rancho? How much do they get from property taxes on average?
Well, the, the average statewide, if I recall, is like a ten percent.
Oh, so it still isn't very much.
No. But the fact of the matter with the LCFF, the property tax, that the equation is gone. Everything's gone. It doesn't matter to anymore. And one thing I want to remind the board, LCFF, state going to, again, there's no guarantee what the level of funding you're getting this year. It could go down, it could go up. On the pop ninety-eight, there was a guarantee. We have no, there's no, like, you know, we cannot bank on anything until we know governance, how it's going to fund it. We believe it's going to fund it increase every year based on, that's what, that's what we believe. So we are using the assumptions. Again, as time goes by, January, governance plan, economy drive down again. Then we have to wait, we have to act on based on what we know at that time. So right now, this is based on everything he's saying, green, green, green. We have not seen the red light yet.
I just wish, I just wish we had
Yeah.
Some money invested in this new In-N-Out that's coming here. They're going to make a kill.
They are. It's going to be a beautiful one too.
Yes, it is.
I have a few more documents I want to, I'm watching the time. If you look at the next one, this is the information I give it to you board just to, for your pleasure to read. This is how we use our assumptions and, and information to build our, our multi-year projections, our adopted budget. Next one, if you open the next, is some of the things is available online. The FICMA indicator, some of the thing board, you may want to see, read through carefully. Some of the districts, you can see why they're in trouble. They're in trouble because of the, these are the things leading to them in trouble. And you can see is one through eleven category. These are, these are the collective informations coming from districts are now fiscal in trouble and what caused them going in that route. So this is a good learning lesson for us to avoid going that same route they, they went through. The last document I have, that's for your information, fiscal health risk analysis, meaning you can see that if you, very first item is deficit spending. You heard me repeatedly, I'm saying this is a disease. If we don't cure that disease, we're going to, someday we're going to die. It's like, you know, if you have symptoms of disease, you don't go see doctors, what do you expect? You're going to get worse. So this is something we need to bring into manageable conditions, meaning get out from that deficit and bring, you know, back to the, what we should have, what level of funding and how the money we don't have, we shouldn't be spending that money.
Where were you two, three years ago, Mohammed?
I'm a chamber in the DM.
But, but it's never too late. Mr. Manja, thank you for the comment. But the fact of the matter is that this LCFF putting a lot of responsibility back to the local, that's just called local control, back to the governing board and administration to manage your school, manage your program, manage your funding. So we cannot blame anymore state because of the restrictions. Remember, we always used to blame your secret program, we cannot do anything because you gave us, state finally gave us what we've been asking for many, many years. With exception to the few program, because it's a federal mandate, like a special ed. So with that, I, it's close to five thirty. I don't want to carry any further longer. That's it. Sorry.
The, the letter from the county will be available on the website for the community and
Yes, yes. It will be available after board, it just came through its official letter. You're getting a new package, board package, Emory Rosie. It came in, so it will be available online. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. So we have a motion by board member O'Kelly and a second by clerk Martinez. All in favor?
Aye.
We gave you this, we gave you guys this.
Yeah.